Good morning, everyone. Just wanted to know that I started recording. Okay, it is 11 o'clock. Good morning and welcome, everyone. Thank you for attending today's public hearing for the homeowner assistance fund program. My name is Ren Ellington, and I'll be your host today. I am the attorney for the homeowner division at Georgia Department of Committee Affairs. Since we are gonna have over 50 attendees, we ask that you mute yourself throughout the hearing, and please type in your questions in the chat. So in a moment, Brenda McGee, our homeowner division director, will give us a brief overview of the half program, and after the overview, we will start answering your questions. Brenda. You're muted.
Good morning. My name is Brenda McGee, and like Ren said, I am the homeownership division director at DCA. Thank you for the comments you send and for taking the time out of your day to join us. We will be using those comments as we work through the detailed plan we submit to Treasury, as well as using them for our underwriting guidelines. So what we posted was a draft term sheet that you saw based on the homeownership homeowner assistance fund requirements in the act. We also use the initial Treasury guideline guidance on that, as well as our experience with the hardest hit fund program. So a couple of things I wanted to point out to you on the act, some of the key requirements is the act requires that a minimum of 60% of the assistance be provided to homeowners with incomes of 100% or less of the area median income. So just as a reference, I wanted to share with you of the 17,200 homeowners we assisted under the hardest hit fund program, over 93% fell in that category. So we expect this program, we will exceed the 60% requirement easily since we had over 93% in the previous one. The remaining funds can be used for homeowners that are socially disadvantaged. Treasury defined that as the definition that's under the SBA program. So those socially disadvantaged can have an income higher than the 100%. Those can go from 101% to 150% of the area median income. Another requirement of the act is the hardship had to be pandemic-related and occur after January the 21st, 2020. So we may not be able to assist other hardships unless we receive some additional guidance from Treasury that opens up those guidelines. So right now, it is strictly COVID-related, and it had to have occurred after January 21st, 2020. So if you had someone that had a forbearance or delinquency prior to that, we are trying to get some guidance from Treasury on how we can handle that. So just a real quick overview of where we are right now with the program. We do have our plan developed. We do know that it may be subject to change. The latest from Treasury is they will be sharing additional guidance soon. So we don't know exactly what soon means. We would hope that it is really soon. We expect to submit our plan within one to two weeks of receiving the additional guidance and instructions from Treasury. So we are right now in a waiting period with, to see if there's some things that needs to be changed in our plan before we submit it to Treasury. Based on the original deadline of June 30th, which is going to be, it looks like it's going to be extended because we don't have any additional information from Treasury at this point. So it looks like that extension is going to happen. So I'm not going to go in and read everything on the term sheet. It's basically, we could help people with their mortgage payments. We can do reinstatement. We can do a principal reduction. There's also a clause in there about facilitating interest rate reductions, which we did some of that with hardest hit. Sometime it worked with lenders, sometimes it didn't. So I think our main focus initially is going to be on getting people reinstated. And we will also focus on homeowners who have a foreclosure notice that's imminent. So if that notice, since the extension has been changed to July 31st, we would expect to see, start seeing some foreclosures based on that within about 90 to 120 days after that deadline. So that's one thing we always focused on with hardest hit was, was those homeowners that are in foreclosure. So I don't really have any other comments, but let's see, do we have anything in the chat?
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay.
Trina, if you are speaking, we can't hear you. You're muted. If you have a question, did you have a question?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. I just wanted to make sure. So Brenda, we're not doing any title search. We're not doing any.
Trina, that would be something that we could discuss later.
I thought it was open for questions. My fault.
No, this is going to be for what we're looking for here. So Trina is with our program. So there's some fine things that we're going to have to work out on the back end, but questions about the program itself is what we're looking at more than anything else. And I saw a question about where to take applications. Well, we're going to be using the website, the DCA website. There'll be an application portal there, similar to what you're, what you can see now for the emergency rental assistance. So it'll be something similar to that. We hope to post a coming soon, some information on the website within probably the next 30 days or so.
And to follow up on something that Patrina just said, we do expect these to be a little bit different than hardest hit. We do expect those to be, them to be a grant rather than a loan. So there will not be a closing on these. I think that will speed along the application somewhat.
Okay, Brenda, we have a question about plans for the outreach in the communities, how to let risk homeowners know that the funds are available.
So we're going to be using a lot of different outreach opportunities. We are going to do a lot with the the way we do the emergency rental assistance. We will be doing outreach, giving to, to kids to various, in various communities. We will have people in various communities that you can reach. I know that we are looking to do some outreach teams across the state. They are right now under the, we're planning that under the emergency rental, but we would also be able to have the opportunity to have that outreach person work with local governments, nonprofits in those areas. We're, I don't know that if we're going to do a billboards like we, we tried with hardest hit, but we may do some advertisements in local newspapers. We will be visiting various areas as well for outreach.
Another question, Brenda, am I eligible to participate in the program if my hardship is prior to the program's beginning?
We are unsure at this time. That's one of the questions we have into Treasury. We know there may be some people that had a hardship prior to that, but the, the rules right now from Treasury is you had to have, it had to be a COVID-related, or it had to have happened after January the 21st of 2020. So we don't know at this time.
And I'm seeing a couple of different questions about the timeframe and how long it will take to process an application once it's been received.
I would say that depending, certainly depending on when you get your application in, since we are, are not going to be going through the closing process, it's going to be a much faster application timeframe. I would say it certainly depends on the servicer as well, as far as how that goes. But I would say we probably would, would be able to do between a 45-day, around a 45-day turnaround. But if we've, if we've gotten 10,000 applications, that certainly isn't going to be possible. But we would prioritize those that have foreclosures.
And a question regarding those that have mortgages now in forbearance?
We would expect to, if the forbearance was related to COVID, we would expect to be able to completely reinstate that loan and clear that forbearance. Also see a call on bankruptcy.
Yes.
From Ryan. So we are going to allow homeowners in bankruptcy to participate in the program. The only, only problem we might run into is if there is a objection from the servicer. So if the servicer says no, then they won't take the money, then that's not going to be, that could be a reason. They have the right to object to that. We also have a hand up.
And there's one about to sell, so grant versus loan. Are we looking at this as a grant? Because they're talking about repay.
Yes. Will we be posting our program with the Department of Labor? We will provide them with the information if they will, can get it on their website.
Right. And a grant, excuse me, does not have to be paid back.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Josephine Brown. Can you hear me?
Yes, Josephine, go ahead.
Well, I'm, I have, I'm with, I'm Josephine Brown Realty, and I have a couple of previous clients who've been in forbearance. And I'm just getting information. I'm here to get information so that I can pass it on to my clients. If you didn't file a forbearance, can you still qualify?
Absolutely. If you need reinstatement and you, and you, it was, it was COVID-related, absolutely you can.
Okay.
Josephine, the only other caveat on that is you, your loan had to be a conforming Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac loan amount. So if it's over the conforming loan amount, maybe would be the only issue.
And Brenda, if you could share the data about delinquencies, if we, I know we were collecting that. I don't know if you have it available to discuss.
We are collecting all of the data from CoreLogic as far as delinquencies. So we're looking at delinquencies, even though they're specifically in the program talks about forbearance, we're actually looking at the delinquency rates down to a ZIP code level. So we know how to market the program to those ZIP codes and to those counties. So we're going down to a deep level on the delinquency. That is going to be one way to determine the areas that need assistance quickly.
Okay. And if you can discuss some of the mortgage-related expenses such as property taxes, insurance, HOA fees, and land contracts?
So we are contemplating assistance for the property taxes and insurance. You may have had a mortgage and it was paid off. You may have a reverse mortgage and you need assistance. But remember, when you talk about all of this, you had to have had a COVID-related hardship to qualify. So that's the thing. So we will be looking at property taxes, insurance, homeowner fees as well in our program. It will, those will be included. So if there's somebody that you, that you want us to specifically notify, I would say that you can send us your, their, or if you want us to notify you when the program is up and running, when we're taking applications, please send us your email address, or if they're, we already have, have accumulated a list of homeowners who have inquired about the program. So once we get the application portal up and it's taking applications, we will probably send it to you as soon as we know it's going to be up. So we'll give you some more, some, some time before it's actually up to do that, to, to get on and do an application.
I've got a question about, does a hardship have to be current? So we're, the timeframe, again, if you want to go over the timeframe to have had a COVID-related delinquency, plus the difference between a forbearance and delinquent mortgage? And explain how we could help in either of those?
So Ms. Ann's question, is that the one we're referring to here?
Let's see, it just moved. Yes.
So does the homeowner's hardship have to be current? So I'm not sure exactly what you're asking there, but if you, if you begin working this month, but you have 14 months, 14 months of delinquency, then yes, we could be, we would be able to assist you with all of the delinquencies during that time that you were not working. So you're, you're saying you have a forbearance that doesn't end until September. So that's good because I would leave it there, but I would start trying to pay a payment since you're working if you can. If you can't, then that's fine. We would reinstate. At the time we do your application, we would reinstate your mortgage in full as long as the delinquency doesn't exceed $50,000.
And the delinquency occurred after, or with a pandemic-related?
It had to be pandemic-related after January 21st of 2020. So Karen has asked us with Atlanta Legal Aid has asked us to send an email of those, we will be sending an email on this call, yes, we will have captured. If you've called in with a, with a, with a phone, please send us your email address into Ren, and we will automatically put you on that list to receive notice when the portal is open.
Hi, this is Josephine again.
Yes.
So if the person is not in forbearance and they are just needing assistance, if they're current on their mortgage, is this a program that can assist in any way just because they may have had some reduction in income, or someone who hasn't been in forbearance, there's nothing?
So Josephine, it would, it would, it would depend certainly on the situation. If they've had a reduction in income and are not, can't afford their payments, is that what you're saying?
Right, even though it's current, they may have kept them current somehow.
Maybe they use savings or some other resource to make those payments.
Yes.
There is a possibility of that. The only, only thing that you could do would be to try to do a modification or a principal reduction to get them to an affordable payment. We did have that program under hardest hit, and it works on some loans, on some it doesn't because of the fact that they're in, I'm just going to say Ginny Mae pools, they're FHA loans. So it certainly would depend on who the investor is. If it's a Fannie Mae or Freddie Mac, that is certainly doable. May not be as much with an FHA or VA, but we would have to look at it, at the individual circumstances on it and see. But what we also have in our term sheet is we would like to help people that maybe they had a forbearance. Maybe they got a modification already, and that is sitting out there as a, on the, on like a partial claim on FHA. So that's sitting out there as a lien on their property, which takes away from their equity. We would like to pay off that second mortgage, or in some cases, a third mortgage that might be out there if it was COVID-related.
Thank you.
Yes.
I believe that covered Rachel Scott's question as well. For income, what are we looking at for income qualifications?
So we're looking at your income at the time of hardship. So if you lost a job and your income was reduced, that is the income that we're going to be looking at. What we would like to do is to, to have a copy of the 2019 versus 2020 tax return, which may be something that we can do on some homeowners. Some may not have that ability, or they may not have been required to file a tax return based on their income level. So we will have to just work through those as we get them to see what the best is, process is to prove that. But we expect to to use as little documentation as possible, maybe even an affidavit. We're just not sure at this time. Certainly depends on what Treasury comes back with on some of the questions that they've been asked.
And if you want to read Cindy Brown's comment, because she's adding to Josephine's question about the loss litigation?
So Cindy says to add to Josephine's questions for non-delinquent borrowers, but still at risk, the lender will not consider a modification unless they're 30 days behind. These are those pools of borrowers who are trying to, trying their best not to get delinquent, but are high risk. Yeah, Cindy, I'm not sure that there's anything we can do with that. We would certainly be happy to work with Fannie. If it's a Fannie or Freddie, you probably have a better chance, but I understand some servicers just don't want to work on those because they've already, they've already modified the loans, or they, they think you're not at risk. So we could certainly help you with that. If you showed us, I guess this is an example that I was thinking of. Possibly you had a spouse or a working household member that was deceased because of COVID, and you've cut your income in half. Maybe you're using a savings for savings account to make some of those payments. We would certainly like to be able to assist you by paying down the, the principal balance. So I would think that they would look at ratios, at the payment ratio to see if you're, say, over 40% payment ratio. But that's one thing, we, we will consider that if the servicer will, will will consider a modification.
This is Josephine again.
Yes.
If someone was on PUA or unemployment in their own business, still made the mortgage payments, didn't go into forbearance, but still qualified under the PUA and, on the PUA program, can you reduce the principal amount instead of going into the forbearance, paying, paying the forbearance since they didn't file?
Explain to me what a PUA is.
Pandemic, pandemic.
Oh, okay, okay.
I'm sorry. If someone qualified based because of COVID for unemployment in their business, so they went under the pandemic unemployment program.
We'll have to look at that, Josephine. I would think if they've got a reduction of, of income, is it a permanent? I guess the question would be, is it a permanent reduction of income? It may or may not be, but.
May or may not be, right, as they're getting back into the business. They did, you know, receive unemployment because of the reduction in their business.
Which is a qualifier for the program if you received unemployment. That's what, one, one way that we're going to look as a automatic qualifier for it.
Okay. So what would you pay then if you didn't, if you, if you didn't file a forbearance?
There's nothing to pay if they're current.
Okay, that's the question. That's what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah, there's nothing to pay if they're current. The only thing they could request would be if they think this is a permanent loss of income, is they could request that we talk to the servicer about a modification, which would reduce the principal balance.
Thank you.
Okay, Brenda, a question about paying forbearance, forbearance that continues to go forward. Would we pay for the whole thing, or would we pay when they, the amount when they applied?
We would pay the forbearance at the time we get a quote from the servicer. So if it takes us 45, 60 days to get the, get the loan approved, sorry, loan, not loan, to get the assistance approved, then we would get a quote from the lender as long as it's under our $50,000 maximum, we would pay the full amount that's. we would pay the full amount that's to bring you current. It may also include corporate advances or escrow advances as well. Corporate advances could be there because of, maybe they've started, maybe there, some servicers may start doing dual tracking and probably somebody like Karen can speak to that more than I can, but with Atlanta Legal Aid. But we found servicers do dual tracking, so they may, even though we tell them we're going to give them assistance, they may begin the foreclosure process.
And the question about foreclosure, about the, will foreclosure be stopped? An application would not stop the foreclosure, but then we do work with the, we expedite those. If you want to go over that.
Right, we normally call the, if we get one that we, it's expedited. If someone sends us a foreclosure notice, we expedite those. We normally contact the servicer and ask them to stop the foreclosure. We can't guarantee that that's going to happen, but that's what we do. In most cases, it does work.
And, and just to piggyback on that, we contact the servicer after underwriting approval. So just submission of an application does not stop the foreclosure.
Thank you, Diane.
Any other questions? There we go.
So Karen has put something in the chat saying if dual tracking is happening, folks should be referred to Atlanta Legal Aid for help. It's prohibited in many situations and they can assist with that. So Karen, question if, if it's not in your area of Atlanta Legal Aid, does Georgia Legal Aid also help with that?
If you can see that, Brenda's, George Senior Legal Hotline, help seniors outside of the Atlanta, metro Atlanta area.
But to note there are seniors.
And HUD counseling agencies can also help if there's a foreclosure. And then there's a foreclosure hotline as well for HUD.
There's also, there's also an opportunity to speak, if you have one that's in a situation like that, you also, what we found is a lot of time, your congressional office can help stop that if the lender won't, won't stop it.
Okay, question on the term sheet, so on the term sheet, that it might be possible to have three mortgage payments covered for those that have not recovered? Is that something that would be possible if forbearance also needs to be covered?
So what we were anticipating was if you, if you're behind on your payments, then you're in a forbearance, or just behind. Let's don't even talk about, I mean, forbearance, yes, but if you're behind on your mortgage payments, then we would be able to bring you current. But we're, we're suggesting to Treasury that we would like to pay three payments in advance, which gives you enough time to hopefully become employed in addition to those delinquencies that we've paid and the three payments. So that's, that's our thinking on that, instead of trying to do monthly payments and having you recertify to us every time you, every month or every other month, we would like, we're going to, we're going to put in our term sheet or in our plan to Treasury that we're going to do three payments in advance if you are not currently employed at the time we assist you with the forbearance. We're not sure that's going to be accepted, but that's what we're going to recommend. So Karen says she would love to help people beyond the metro Atlanta area also. Thank you, Karen. So we'll be working with Karen as one of our partners to determine how we do that.
Okay, and Pedro has a question? Let's raise his hand.
Yes, good morning, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I'm calling, this is Pedro Martinez with Catholic Charis Atlanta. We are a HUD-approved housing counseling agency and we provide foreclosure prevention services. Yeah, dual tracking is illegal, it is, we all report this to the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau when we are working with clients, with homeowners. But they do have better chances of stopping a foreclosure when they are working with a housing counseling agency. I just want to say that. And we are going to be working with you guys as well.
Yes, so what we would expect is, we expect to be working with housing counselors as well as our other housing partners to assist with, hopefully with intake for those homeowners that need help with their applications. We haven't yet worked on the compensation model on that, but we are working on what we could do to get some help from the housing counselors and the nonprofits across the state.
We're here to help.
Thank you so much, Pedro.
Are all counties in Georgia qualified to participate with?
Yes, all counties, all counties are eligible for assistance.
Any additional questions?
Okay, so we've captured your email address if you signed in here. If you did not, if you called in, please send, oh, I see, Josephine, okay, I'll get back to you in a minute, just a minute, Josephine. Please send Rin Ellington an email and we'll be sure that we get you on the list to notify when everything happens. Josephine, you had another question?
Josephine, you're muted, I don't know if you're trying to speak or not.
Maybe she just.
I'm sorry, I'm Miss Stevens, I do have a question, I called in and it seems I can't get back into the chat to enter my question.
Okay.
So I do have a question, so will these payments be directly to the lenders and mortgage companies themselves? Like, will it be like a smooth process that way? Or will there be like additional information needed or additional processes taken so the payments are made?
You just tell us who your lender is. We're going to probably ask you for your most recent mortgage statement when you apply and we deal directly with the lenders. You do not need to, they do not, they're already signed up with us. So, um, just for, for those of you that don't know, most lenders with the Hardest Hit Fund Program already had a representative that we worked with, all the states worked with for mortgage payments. We have a process already in place to transmit data to them. They send the data back to us and that's how we send, send money through electronic wires. So that's how your payments would be made to the lender. So once we get your information, just your mortgage statement is what we're going to need and it will, there will be in the package a third-party agreement that you would need to sign. It's going to be electronic in this version of our application. You would sign that and we would send it to the lender that tells them that you have given us the authority to get information on your account.
Brenda, question? Sorry. Thank you. Once the program opens, will you need to apply right away?
I would suggest that you apply as soon as you can, once the program opens.
And.
So how do I know if my mortgage, if the mortgage company is a participant? We will have a list out there in a drop-down box of the mortgage lenders, servicers. There was, we had about 200. A lot of the habitats as well were signed up before. So if you don't see your, your mortgage company in the drop-down box when you apply, you may want to call us so we can get going on trying to get that mortgage company signed up for the program.
Okay, and how many weeks are, what's the estimated launch date?
It certainly depends on what Treasury gives us. We are, we're anticipating four to five weeks, but we don't know if that's the case. It certainly depends on, on what the, when, when we can submit our plan to Treasury, when they open everything up. Right now, it is not open for submissions.
Okay, will people be able to apply via paper applications, which they could mail or fax, or in-person? For those people who do not have access to computers or internet?
We would, we, that is an option we had under Hardest Hit. What we would probably do first is refer them to a counselor or a partner that's in a area close to them and let them do the intake for us. But that's certainly an option. Paper applications are going to take a little bit longer because you have to have someone key them in. So it's, it, it will work either way, but we would have that as an option always.
And just one comment, Brenda, the, the application system that we're reviewing right now, or we've contracted with, they have stated that it can be handled on a smartphone. We haven't tested that out. So you could actually do the application on a smartphone and even upload documents from pictures taken from your phone.
So if you have to include your driver's license, you can take a picture on your, on your phone of your driver's license and attach it. So we hope that will be helpful to everyone. So the application is not available yet, we haven't turned the website on. We would expect it to be available in the next few weeks. We will announce it on our website at DCA and we will also, if you're on here, we will send you a notice when we know the date of the application being available.
Are there any additional questions?
All right, well, thank you everyone for taking the time today to join us, we appreciate it. We appreciate your comments, we've captured all of those in the chat so we can go back and review them to see how we can handle those. And we certainly want to make this program available to everyone that we can and we're looking at all the requirements and to see how we can make it easy for you to do online, in-person, paper, visiting a counselor, whatever it happens to be. We want you to have the information and, and we want you to pass it along to people that you know that may have been affected by the program, by the pandemic, because we want to try to get these funds out as soon as possible. I am glad that, that there has been a delay of 30 days in the foreclosure. That gives us a little bit more time, but we expect to, like I said, expect to get everything out to Treasury as soon as we can get it to them and then open up our portal for application intake.
Brenda, we have another question. Regarding use of funds for paying liens, partial claims, can that be reserved until the homeowners at risk of foreclosure have been helped? I'm concerned that the funds are limited and the purpose for the funds is to avoid displacement.
So we are certainly going to be working on those homeowners that are in the socially disadvantaged and the 100% AMI. We're going to, we're going to prioritize all of our delinquencies as well, but we will, we will be, we will, we have to pay some, some liens. There are some actual homeowner association liens that I think are, they've become pretty aggressive. So we will certainly prioritize anybody that is in foreclosure. All right, well, thank you all for joining us today and email us, either Rin or you can email myself. If you, it's brenda.mcgee@dcag.gov. If you have any other questions or want us to have anything for us to consider in the, the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Brenda, I'll end the meeting now.
Okay. I didn't know Tanya was on here, but she just sent us an email.
Yeah, I saw that.
Mm-hmm. She originally said that she didn't want to, to take questions, but I thought it was better to take them.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, bye.
All right, bye.